First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody in the audience and please turn off your cellphones as it will interfere or could interfere with our audio transmission. Roll call, please.
Schneider.
Here.
Lammers.
Present.
Med.
Here.
Johnsons excused, Tallman here, Ingram.
Present.
Connell and Hepner excused, Brandsguard.
Here.
Reinarts.
Here.
And Manus.
Here.
We have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tallman. Report of city council activity.
Nothing more to report.
Secretary's report.
Move report.
Secretary's report has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same hearing none, it will stay as printed. Report of comp plan, Matt.
Again, well, we did initiate this week some, I won't say it, it's an area plan or a corridor study, but some discussions with stakeholders in the North Brady and Welcome Way area, particularly between I-80 and 53rd Street. We've touched on everything as far as zoning compatibility, appropriate land use, crime and safety concerns, traffic, you can imagine signage and wayfinding. So again, that was an initial meeting. I think it was a good start and I'll report on future activities, including whether or not anything specific needs to be addressed in the comp plan at a later time.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, any questions? Jane, your light's lit up, did you need anything? Okay. Thank you, Matt. We'll move on to zoning activity. Commissioner Tallman, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two cases under new business. First one, case REZ-19-10, request of Larry Witty on behalf of KJTLJ LLC to rezone .73 acres, more or less of property located at the southeast corner of West Locust Street and Ripley Street from R4C, single-family and two-family Central Residential Zoning District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District. Staff recommends the planning zoning commission forward, case REZ-19-10 to the city council with a recommendation for approval and I so move.
Case number REZ-19-10's been moved and seconded for discussion. Ryan?
Good evening. Ryan Rustnack with Community Planning. The petitioner yesterday amended their request from C2 to C1. This purpose, it reads a little bit different. Property is currently zoned R4C, which is single-family and two-family Central Residential Zoning District. The land use map is residential general. Residential general land use does allow some commercial, they're mostly residential homogeneous neighborhoods, but does allow for commercial at the edge of a neighborhood. And we would certainly consider West Locust Street to be an edge to that neighborhood. This is the purpose statement for the C1 zoning classification. Predominantly serve the needs of nearby residential neighborhoods or compatible in scale and character with the surrounding residential area. Low intensity mixed use is encouraged. Petitioner hasn't identified any particular commercial use for the property, but mixed use has been talked about, but the current owner hasn't identified a specific commercial Neighborhood meeting was held on August 29th. At that time, there were a few people were concerned about C2 as opposed to C1 zoning. We did send notices to property owners within 200 feet. There was a couple of public hearings and again, few people expressed concern over C2 as opposed to C1. And certain, we had commissioners that also expressed that same concern. We have not received any formal letters of objection. So this is the zoning map in the area. This is pretty indicative of kind of what we see, you know, we've got a mixture of land uses, we've got institutional uses, we've got commercial uses, we have residential uses. So the light pink is all the C1 zone property. The C2, the darker red is the C2 zone properties. If you look at, so predominantly from a commercial standpoint, majority of the properties is zoned C1. The exceptions are what we would consider a little bit bigger box retail, and that would be the Walgreens and the Aldi. And really, the concerns stemmed from the initial application. C2 zoning tends to be oriented towards a high transportation corridor such as West Kimberly Road, while West Locust is an arterial road. The character of this area is much different and smaller in scale. These are the approval standards that are set forth in the Davenport City Code. Consistency with the comprehensive plan, as I mentioned, it's RG, typically residential, but you can't have commercial uses closer to an edge. It's staff's opinion that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Compatibility with zoning of nearby property. Previously with C2 zoning, staff struggled with this, however, with the C1 zoning being requested, the design of that is more of a traditional neighborhood. It would be much more compatible with surrounding area. Compatible with the established character of the area. This property is located in the Hilltop Campus Village, which is a urban main street, an Iowa main street, and they are trying to encourage a traditional neighborhood style of development. C1 zoning by its very nature is constructed to encourage that, requires lesser setbacks to property lines, required build to, more of a suburban development style would be larger setbacks with parking in front. So this actually pushes the building up and it excludes certain uses that C2 offers that may be incompatible with closer surrounding residential property. We believe that the request as C1 promotes the public health, safety, and welfare of the city of Davenport. Five is suitability of the property for the purpose it was currently zoned. It's currently zoned, single-family residential, I'm sorry, single-family, two-family, but those properties were considered underutilized. And our staff's already provided an opinion that some type of commercial use would be appropriate in this location. And would the amendment create any nonconformities? So when we do our development review for whatever use comes forward, we'll ensure that no nonconformities are created. So these are the two findings that the, it would facilitate traditional neighborhood development, which is more compatible with the main street development pattern in the district and what the Hilltop Campus Village is striving for. And the proposed map amendment would achieve consistency with section 17, 14040E1, and those are the approval standards. So staff recommends you forward this to the city council with a recommendation for approval without any special conditions.
Thank you, Ryan. Commissioners, any questions at this point? Commissioner Manus?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ryan, if this had come before us with a development proposal attached, I know a lot of times we would draft suggestions or restrictions on it. Is that accurate?
That has been a practice, yes.
I am wondering if, when this does come back with a development proposal, would the commission and the council be able to attach restrictions to it at that point based on the character of the development and the surrounding neighborhood?
So subsequent, assuming this were approved by city council, there would be no subsequent review. It would be an administrative site plan that would be only reviewed at the staff level. I would offer some insight that our code previously was so antiquated that we were putting in conditions to offset some of that antiquated language. We believe that the code, our new code, the way it's constructed makes that not necessary.
Okay. So staff is confident that the code and the development standards that exist now would adequately regulate any future development under the C1?
We do.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions at this time? Seeing none, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Would the petitioner, is the petitioner present? Would he or she like to come forward and speak? You don't need to speak at all, you don't need to speak at all, to be honest with you. I just didn't know if you had anything additional you would like to add at this time before I allow the audience to speak.
No.
If you don't, that's fine. Do the commissioners have any questions of the petitioner at this time? Seeing none, thank you. Would anybody in the audience like to step forward and speak either in favor or in opposition to this petition? Please do so at this time. Please state your name. Final questions from commissioners? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schneider.
Yes.
Lammers.
Yes.
Med.
Yes.
Tallman, yes. Brandsguard.
Yes.
Reinarts.
Yes.
And Manus.
Yes.
Motion carries. The final act, or case petition this evening is case ORD-19-03, request of the city of Davenport to reduce the maximum building height in portions of the CE Elmore Corner Zoning District from 120 feet to 55 feet. Staff recommends table 17.05-5 CE district dimensional standards be amended to read in the row, maximum building height, 120 feet, 55 feet west and south of Elmore Avenue. An ISO move.
Case number F-19-0, I'm sorry, ORD-19-03 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Matt?
Thank you, Matt Flynn, Community Planning. Don't really have any specific presentation, just up here to answer any questions. Just a little bit of background, it isn't relatively unusual to have specific ordinance language sent from council down to the P&amp;Z to consider. Obviously, we support council directive and recommend approval. I think it's, what's imperative though, is that we follow a good, open process. So we have, again, notified the five property owners as well as Jersey Farms Neighborhood. And, you know, I guess, you know, one thing I was thinking of, what makes this different from the other two districts that the Design Review Board has authority over, the Village of East Davenport and Downtown. Downtown does not have any height limit, but actually, the Design Review Board or the Village of East Davenport, master plan within that plan itself does specifically call out a maximum height of 45 feet. There are no numbers like that in the Elmore Corners Plan, so I think adding this language removes some of that ambiguity.
Thank you, Matt.
Do you have any questions?
Commissioners, any questions at this time? Seeing none? Thank you, Matt. At this time, I will open it up to the audience. Would anybody like to step forward and speak either in favor or opposition? Please do so. State your name, address, and address all your concerns to the commission, please.
Good evening. My name is Tom Jacobson, resident of the 6th Ward and Jersey Farms and representing the Jersey Farms Neighborhood Association. As Matt said, the current CE zoning for Elmore Corners allows a maximum 120-foot building height, which includes the areas immediately north and east of Jersey Farms. So on the north side, it's from the Call Home as a point of reference going towards the east, and on the east side, from Mill Chevrolet going to the south. So we look in two parts, the area immediately north of Jersey Farms. Back in 2014, when city approved case F-14-11 was the resolution approving the casino, there was a series of conditions in there. Item number 26 limited the building height on that north side of Veterans to a 50-foot building height was part of the conditions put in place at that particular time. On the east side at that time was a PDD planned development district, and of course, then at that point was subject to approval, public meetings, public notification, approval by this board as well as by city council. With a new zoning in place, then those, that kind of goes away. There is only the review by the Design Review Board. The PDD also then allowed some additional protection because there was an opportunity for interaction, talking, going through planning zoning and going through city council. And in fact, in that particular situation, we had direct interaction with Mill Chevrolet when that came to pass and had discussions and came up some compromises and came to a conclusion there. So we don't have that protection existing at that particular time as it exists today. There's been some concern about the area on the immediately south end of the area under consideration. That area immediately to the west of that is adjacent now to R2 zoning, and the area on the south and the east side is C3, which is also 55 feet, which is being requested here as well. So there is some compatibility there for some transitional zoning from residential to the commercial district. So we respectfully request approval of the height restriction or height change from 120 feet to 55 feet. Well, it's not quite the same protections that neighbor had before. We think it's a reasonable compromise to move forward and protect the zoning neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tallman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matt, I just, just for clarification, and I know the gentleman brought that point up about the ordinance back in, was it 14?
14, yes.
That had height restrictions already in place. Is that, this would, I guess, take over, so that's actually adding five feet, or is the 50 feet still in place?
No, the 50 feet is not in place. If you recall, in the ordinance, the very last section includes a couple dozen specific ordinance conditions over the past 20 or 25 years that the, well, ultimately, the council decided were worthy of carrying forward. The restriction, which was kind of surprising, not surprising, but unusually, it was actually in a subdivision, it was actually zoning conditions included in a subdivision approval. That's pretty unusual. Those did not carry forward that lot in question specifically. It's kind of as the crow flies between the Rhythm City Casino Development and Jersey Farms.
Okay. So then this will set it at 55 and?
It would.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reinarts?
Thank you. This is for Matt as well. Looking at the packet that we got and not seeing a presentation, I just want to be clear that we're speaking about property that is on the south side of Elmore and on the east side of Elmore, all the way down to 53rd. Is that correct?
It's actually the west side. This would apply to the property west of Elmore.
West side, I'm sorry.
It's in essence, north of, I get our small creeks.
Pheasant Creek?
Pheasant Creek. So essentially, north of Pheasant Creek, all the way up to, and as you know, Elmore then veers to the west to connect up with Jersey Ridge Road and would be south of there.
Okay, so it's that whole, I'm sorry, it's west, on the west side. Okay, thank you very much.
Any additional questions at this time? Seeing none, would anybody else in the audience like to speak either in favor or opposition? Now would be your time to step forward.
I'm here on behalf of VTS Farm Parcel A LLC, the owner of the parcel that's part of Elmore Corners Overlay District that is the very south end of this area. It's the property that is south of 60th and north of Pheasant Creek. In the presentation two weeks ago, I guess my impression was that it was pretty clear that the purpose behind this amendment to the zoning or the rezoning, as it would be, was because of the adjacent residential property owners. And in fact, the bullet points that were presented last time we were here, one of them provided the following language. Staff believes the intent of the scale of development on property adjacent to Jersey Farms is clear. And the point that I want to make is the property that we are seeking to protect from the limitation is not adjacent to Jersey Farms. It's south of 60th, and it is directly across from the Davenport Commons area that I think I chatted with you folks the last time I was before you. But in any event, the objections that we raised in our letter prior to the previous meeting stand, we believe that to, first of all, you went to a great deal, or the city went to a great deal of expense in their study in creating Elmore Corners Overlay District. And within that, and I think last time I even mentioned that I remembered reading something about the area where they talked about the four-story limitation relative to that. And so I went back afterwards, and it's on page 13 of the final staff report that existed back then, that talks about it, and in the area that they were talking about, which was sort of south of the Call Home. We stand by our position, we stand by the objections that we raised in the previous letter. We believe that it would be improper to have the height restriction throughout. There's already built-in protections in the overlay district itself. Last time, we talked about the fact that if this rezoning goes through, or this clarification, however you want to call it, goes through, then in order to get anything beyond the 55-foot limitation, there would have to be a hardship variance, and that would be an additional hurdle when you already have the Design Review Board or Design Review Process that's set forth in the overlay district plan. So for those reasons and the reasons we presented last time, we believe that, well, first of all, we believe it should be limited to what currently exists in the overlay Corners District. There's built-in protections already in that plan and that overlay district concept that would protect and gives control over what is built in this overlay Corners area. The second thing is, is if that isn't acceptable to just go with this, we believe that this particular parcel, 15.24 acre parcel should be excluded from the proposed building restriction or height restriction. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Reinarts?
Thank you. This is for Matt. After looking at the packet, I'm trying to remember about six months ago, is this property that they're speaking of on the, excuse me, on the other side of the ravine where we approved or changed the zoning for residential properties behind Costco?
Yeah, that's correct. The property that the previous speaker mentioned is roughly across from the Walmart.
Directly across the ravine then and across the street from Walmart?
Yes.
Okay. And then I guess my question is, is should we not provide the same protections for a proposed neighborhood when we've already looking at providing protections for existing neighborhoods?
I think one of the challenges in, you know, having one zoning district, but then trying to apply different standards to different parts of that district becomes problematic. The, what staff has proposed as a response is pretty clear-cut because it uses Elmore Avenue, an arterial street that is likely not to change in the future as its geography in essence.
So basically, they would, the proposed neighborhood would have the same benefits then in a protection as Jersey Farms does along that strip.
I think that's a, that's a fair argument.
All right, thank, thank you very much.
Any additional questions at this time? Seeing none, I will open it up to the audience again. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Final call? Please step forward.
I'm Susan Gallagher, I live at 2911.
Please talk into the microphone, please.
I'm Susan Gallagher, I live at 2911 East 64th Street, and I'd just like to mention that what the speaker was just talking about, that despite the fact that it might be not immediately adjacent, I can see Walmart from my son's two-story bedroom window. I live on the backside of Jersey Farms, a couple of blocks in, a couple of blocks over. After we built the casino and Mill Chevrolet, I had to get room darkening shades for the front bedrooms because the light was so severe. And I understand, everyone tells me, well, eventually, all these trees will grow in, but in the meantime, we have to live with this. Additionally, if you look around, there really aren't that many super tall buildings, and I would actually seriously ask the question, why would you want a building that tall in that area? When you're looking around at the other buildings that are there, they don't exceed those things. So I would really encourage you to think about protecting this neighborhood. These are really good neighborhoods. They, you know, there's a strong amount of owner-occupied neighbors. These are families, retirees, we've spent a lot of money, we're paying a lot in taxes in this town, and clearly, by surrounding us with more and more commercial that sort of takes over, it will become less and less desirable for people to live there. And as Tom said, as he very eloquently said, creating this buffer zone seems like a really good compromise. It allows everyone to have a little bit of everything. And given the fact that most of us, many of us, myself included, bought our house before you rezoned for the casino and everything, the fact is, is that we continually feel as though these changes, every single one, is making our lives more and more difficult, and I'm just watching the resale value of my house plummet. So I'd just like to give you my personal perspective.
Thank you.
I'm Jeff Highland, I live at 6307 Fairhaven Road. My house actually backs up to the east side facing Elmore Avenue. That land is probably about 25 feet higher than the elevation on my side. So if you put a 10-story building over there, it is going to be quite a nice, or as the lady just spoke to. We have spent a lot of money on our homes, we do pay a lot of taxes. At the risk of having the citizens wag the tail, as I think you mentioned, or last meeting, that's who you represent, are the citizens of Davenport. And I believe in commercial development, but there has to be a good buffer between the residential areas and the commercial areas, which if you do this, there's hardly any buffer as it is. So please vote to limit the height.
Thank you. Next. Final call? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Lammers?
May I clarify what we're voting on? Please.
We are voting for a height reduction to 55 feet from the formerly stated height of 120 feet. So we are reducing the height of the buildings, allowable height, to 55 feet.
And clarifying, from the west and south of Elmore Avenue.
Correct. And a vote of yes changes the height limit.
From 120 to 50.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Lammers?
Yes.
Med?
Yes.
Tallman, yes? Brandsguard?
Yes.
Reinarts?
Yes.
Manus?
Yes.
And Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries, and that concludes the zoning activity report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tallman. We'll move on to subdivision activity. Commissioner Brandsguard?
We have one item, case F-19-03, request of HOA Development LLC for a final plat for a three-lot subdivision located east of Elmore Avenue and southeast of the terminus of East 46th Street. Plannin' Zone Commission had recommended approval of this request in March at a meeting. However, the plat's been reconfigured, so it's being returned to us tonight for reconsideration. The staff recommends that the Plannin' Zone Commission accept the two listed findings and forward case F-19-03 to the city council with a recommendation for approval, subject to the five listed conditions, and I so move.
Case F-19-03 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Ryan?
Just a straightforward plat, if you happen to be on Elmore Avenue and see the construction, that's a Fairfield Inn Hotel being constructed there, so there'd be a commercial lot in the front, Fairfield in the back, and the outlot is for stormwater management. So just here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Commissioners, any questions? Seeing none? Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak either in favor or opposition to this?
Kirk Whalen with Heart of America Group on this.
Good evening. Kirk Whalen with Heart of America Group on this. And, um, just, uh, actually, one point of clarification, uh, Ryan, on, uh, that, that, uh, our engineer hadn't gotten back to me. On number five, the, uh, proposed sign easement, what was the issue there?
So it's not required for a sign easement to be on a plat. Um, there's really no purpose for it. We're not in a position to prohibit a sign from being located there. It's just, it's just a, it's really not one of the minimum conditions required for a plat.
Okay. Is this a perfluous, all right.
Correct.
Okay. Very good. So anyway, that we, uh, all we did was adjust a little bit of the lines, uh, to fit, to fit everything for the hotel. So that's it. I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of the petitioner? Seeing none? Would anybody else in the audience like to step forward and speak either in favor or opposition? Final call? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Med?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes? Brandsguard?
Yes.
Reinarts?
Yes.
Manus?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
And Lammers?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That would conclude the subdivision activity. We'll move on to future business. Staff, any comments?
We just, we just have a couple of subdivision plats that'll be brought forward at the next meeting.
Okay. Open communication at this time. If anybody in the audience would like to address anything on your mind? Seeing none? Any other business? Staff, commissioners? Seeing none? All those in favor of adjournment signify by. Pose. We are adjourned. Thank you for your attendance, and please drive home safe.